Everybody please stand for the flag, sir. Flag raised. This is two of the United States of America, two thirty five, which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice. So.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, February fourth, 2020. The time is now eight fourteen. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty one, Public Law nineteen seventy five, notice that this meeting was published in the November twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci, absent, excused. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayor, except for Commissioner Tucci, he is absent, excused this evening.
Just, uh, let's do the minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have minutes for December seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, December thirty first, two thousand and nineteen, and January second, twenty twenty. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
For the public, we're gonna be going a little out of order with the agenda to, uh, have our professionals get in and out of here, and also some of our guests. So, uh, I'm gonna go to public hearing. Ordinance number three four three six. In ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex amending Nutley Phase Two A redevelopment plan. For motion to open the public hearing? Anybody who wanted to be heard on ordinance number three four three six? Motion to close public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Move the ordinance.
Move it.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. I'm going to move now to resolutions thirty five twenty, thirty six twenty, and thirty seven twenty. Mr. Inglesino, you wanna give us some background on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, John Inglesino, Inglesino Webster. I'm Special Redevelopment Counsel for the Township of Nutley. And, uh, you just passed ordinance amending the redevelopment plan, uh, which would essentially provide a short-term measure for medical school students to park in the new garage located behind buildings one hundred and two hundred. The original redevelopment plan, as you may recall, strictly limited parking in the garages to tenants and occupants of buildings one hundred and two hundred, and specifically precludes any other vehicles from parking in those garages. We were approached by the medical school, uh, who had been working, obviously, with Prism, who owns, uh, the garages, uh, for a temporary opportunity for medical school students to park in the building one hundred and two hundred garage while the garage for the medical school is being, uh, constructed. This is a short-term measure. The ordinance that you just passed automatically terminates and expires on September thirtieth, at which time medical school students will no longer be permitted, uh, to park in the garage. But again, this was done really to accommodate, uh, safety concerns for the medical school students to be able to park, um, in the garage while their garage is being constructed. You're, uh, now gonna consider a resolution to amend the redevelopment agreement essentially in a way that mirrors the redevelopment plan ordinance that you just passed. So that is, that is one of the resolutions, uh, that is up for consideration tonight. And then, uh, that amended redevelopment agreement, which has been, uh, reviewed both by council through the medical school and council by Prism, can then be executed by the mayor. Also, you're gonna be considering tonight resolutions regarding the assignment and assumptions of the redevelopment agreement and of the financial agreement with respect to building one hundred. That is the building that is occupied by Ralph Loren. Prism, or PB Nutcliff, the owner of that building, has entered into a contract to sell that building to Lumina, Lumina, who is a contract buyer. As you know, there is a financial agreement, uh, providing for tax abatement for building one hundred, which was previously, uh, passed by the, uh, by the commissioners. There's also a redevelopment agreement, uh, governing building one hundred that was passed by the commissioners. The two resolutions tonight would, would authorize for an assignment of both of those documents, um, you know, to, to Lumina. The financial agreement in particular requires your consent, uh, which cannot be unreasonably withheld, delayed, or conditioned. Because, you know, there is a tax abatement involved here, uh, the agreements contemplate a process whereby the commissioners have an opportunity to do some due diligence on the incoming buyer, which you have done. We have, uh, sent out a checklist of items, particularly financial items and management items, to ensure that the new buyer is, is a capable buyer, both financially and from the perspective of management, to be able to own these buildings. And, uh, some of the commissioners, I know most of you have also met with principals of the new buyer. The new buyer has provided, uh, all of the information that has been requested, and, uh, so we would recommend that you would approve the, uh, resolutions that authorize the mayor to sign the assumption, assignment and assumption agreement, uh, for the financial agreement, and also with regard to the redevelopment, uh, agreement as well. As an aside, um, redevelopment agreement for building one hundred appears that it won't last for very much longer, um, as there's an effort to be made before the planning board to obtain a final approval for that building, at which time, uh, the town will be able to provide a certificate of completion, which will technically take building one hundred out of redevelopment process. Of course, the financial agreement will live on for thirty years in accordance with those terms, um, but building one hundred would then have satisfied or completed, I should say, uh, the redevelopment process. The other, uh, two agreements for which you have resolutions on, actually, it's one resolution for two agreements, are escrow agreements with respect to Phase Two B and also Phase Three, which is for the remainder, uh, of the, of the site to be built out. Those agreements simply provide the mechanism whereby the developer will, uh, place money into escrow so that the town's professionals can be paid, um, for the work that they do on behalf of the town, um, by money that is funded through the agreement by the developer, uh, as opposed to, uh, to the taxpayers of Nutley. And, and so this is a, again, a mechanism that is put in place, uh, for, for that. There are also some outstanding, um, bills and so forth that are gonna be settled with the developer as, as part of this. Again, very common, this is the way, uh, this structure works, not only in Nutley, but throughout the state in redevelopment, where the redeveloper will fund escrows to pay for the town's professionals, and we need these escrow agreements in place in order to, uh, in order to accomplish that. And I think, Mr. Mayor, that's a, a brief overview of the various items that you described.
Thank you, Mr. Inglesino. Any questions for the commissioners, for Mr. Inglesino, before we proceed? All right, let's, uh, let's move these resolutions. Resolution thirty five twenty, authorization approved of First Amendment to Redevelopment Agreement by and between the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley as a redevelopment entity and PB Nutcliff Master LLC concerning a portion of the Phase Two A redevelopment area, move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution number thirty six twenty, authorize the Township of, Township of Nutley to consent to the partial assignment assumption of the redevelopment agreement and the assignment assumption of financial agreements relating to the transfer of building one hundred located within Phase Two A of the Hoffen La Roche redevelopment area. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution thirty seven twenty, authorize escrow agreements between PB Nutcliff Master, providing for a payment reimbursement of township expenses relating to the redevelopment of portions of the Hoffen La Roche redevelopment area, move the resolution.
Move it.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Inglesino. Let's move to communications and correspondence.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several correspondents, and I'm gonna read them all together first, and then we can, uh, have a motion and, and continue. The Knights of Columbus Holy Family Council has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle drawing on Sunday, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty, from one P M, uh, at one P M, excuse me, at Holy Family Church, twenty eighth Brookline Avenue. The Nutley Elks Lodge has submitted an application for a social affair permit for the Saint Patrick's Day event on Saturday, March seventh, twenty twenty, from nine A M to eleven P M at two forty two Chestnut Street. The Nutley Irish American Alliance has submitted an event application for their forty-second, uh, Saint Patrick's Day parade to be held on Saturday, March seventh, twenty twenty, from one P M to three P M, uh, on Franklin Avenue, starting from Harrison Street and ending at the John Walker Middle School. The Good Shepherd Academy has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle drawing on Sunday, March twenty ninth, uh, from two P M to eight P M, uh, at twenty-fourth Brookline Avenue. Saint Mary's Roman Catholic Church has submitted an application for a social affair permit to be held, um, uh, I'm sorry, to hold their Saint Anthony's Feast on Friday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, from six P M to ten P M at their property located at Seventeen Monseigneur Owens Place. Luna Wood Fire Tavern has submitted an application for an extension of premises for their Saint Patrick's Day event on Saturday, March seventh, twenty twenty, from twelve P M to ten P M at two twenty-three Franklin Avenue. The Rotary Club of Nutley has submitted an application for a social affair for their beef steak dinner event on Saturday, April fourth, from six P M to ten P M at Forty-four Park Avenue. The Friends of Phoenix Center has, has submitted a social affair permit application for their casino night event to be held on Friday, May first, uh, at sixteen Monseigneur Owens Place, from six P M to eleven P M. And the Nutley Chamber of Commerce has, has submitted an event application to hold their annual five K fun run on Sunday, May third, from five thirty A M to eleven A M. And that's it for communications. Need a motion, please.
Move all of the communications.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Reports, uh, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for, uh, December two thousand and nineteen, as well as the fourth quarter for two thousand and nineteen, and, as well as the two thousand and nineteen annual report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bills, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Bill is for February fourth, twenty twenty. Public Affairs, eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and two cents. Revenue and Finance, seven million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety cents. Public Safety, five hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Public Works, twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Parks and Public Property, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eleven cents. Water Utility, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Move bills.
One moment, please. I just, I need to do payroll. Thank you. So, regular payroll, overtime payroll for January twenty fourth, twenty twenty is thirty-nine thousand, thirty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Total payroll for January twenty fourth, twenty twenty is nine hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and five cents. Payroll retro overtime for January twenty fourth, twenty twenty is forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Total retro payroll is one million, ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-two cents, for a grand total of ten million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Now move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer, the majority of the membership of the Board, shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing the Board of Commissioner announcement, Commissioners?
Hi, everyone. Just, uh, an, an update. Just recently, a letter has been circulated, uh, to all homeowners from appraisal systems, it's the independent appraiser for the township. We are subject to a town-wide revaluation of all of our real property in town, both commercial and residential. Uh, this is the beginning of the process. It has to be completed, uh, by, uh, September, uh, October timeframe, uh, but it's beginning the inspection process. I think it's a, a couple of things, uh, just as a reminder, people have, have already asked me about, when we revalue the town, how much more in the way of tax dollars do we generate, uh, will we be asking for? And the answer is none. Um, the revaluation does not raise new taxes. It, uh, the increase in value lowers the tax rate, which zeros out a tax increase, but depending upon how property values have changed, it could result in a shift between properties. Uh, so there, uh, I wanted to be clear about answering, answering the question that a revaluation does not raise new taxes. Uh, the other element is a couple of things that we were, we've been doing, um, and to be prepared for this. One is, uh, we've added to the process, and this was some feedback we got the last time, is that when appraisal systems will be in an area, uh, they're gonna be sending out postcards, uh, that will tell the residents in that area that the, the inspector is coming. If they happen to meet, uh, miss the owner, uh, they will leave them a card to let them know that they were there, and they can, uh, schedule to have them come back to look at the interior of the property. While they're there, they will look at the exterior, uh, as a process step. Uh, the most important thing about this is, is that, one, we wanted to make sure that they were being courteous and that they were notifying residents about this process. But the most important piece is, is that we've coordinated with the Public Safety Department and Commissioner Petrakko to make sure that every one of the inspectors is wearing a, uh, municipal I D, uh, and that, uh, no one should allow, uh, any inspector onto their property, uh, unless they actually see a valid municipal I I D. Uh, so we will be instituting that, and that will go on, uh, throughout this process. I've been, already been asked, well, what's gonna happen to the valuation of my home? Uh, and that will be determined by the independent appraiser, and those valuation adjustments won't be known until, uh, sometime in late, uh, September, early October timeframe. So, it's the beginning of the process, uh, and, uh, the last thing, uh, that, uh, I've been asked is, why are we doing this? Um, and, one, the last time we did the revaluation of the town, uh, the time prior to that, the town, prior revaluation was done in nineteen seventy-seven, so from nineteen seventy-seven to two thousand and five, there wasn't anything done. There is, uh, a, a trigger that the Essex County Board of Taxation follows, and so when they hit that, they order revaluation. So where we're at is, we have been ordered by the Essex County Board of Taxation to complete a revaluation of the town, and that the revaluation, uh, will be completed this year to affect the records for the tax year beginning in twenty twenty-one. So it's been ordered by the Essex County, uh, Board of Taxation. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to have a, a couple moments of silence, if we can. Obviously, um, you know, we had a terrible, horrible fire in Nutley a couple weeks ago, where there was loss of life of a mom and his son. Um, I've been in contact with the family. Um, they're from Park Avenue where I grew up. First of all, that neighborhood, what they did and came together and raised money and all the friends. Um, I met with Mrs. Russo and her son, Alfred. Um, they can't thank the Board of Commissioners, the first responders, everybody enough, um, for what they have done for their family in this tragic moment. Um, I was on the scene, this unbelievable with, um, our first responders, and I'd like to thank all the, uh, mutual aid that was sent from all the surrounding towns, and and those guys and girls did unbelievable, um, the M Ts, ambulance squads, police and fire, and it's amazing, um, it's amazing how they really earned their money and they're worth their weight in gold, um, and the things that they have to take home and, and they say during their work, um, cycle. So I'd just like to thank them. Um, a dear friend of mine, the Algeri family, they lost their mom, um, last week, and a little story with them, um, our police officers were able to bring their mom back twice, which is incredible. The Algeri family, um, is so thankful for that. Unfortunately, Mrs. Algeri passed away at the hospital later, um, that evening, but if we can, Mayor, I'd just like to, um, acknowledge the good work of all our first responders, all our departments, your Board of Commissioners coming together, you know, when there's, uh, tragedy in Nutley like we had. So I'd just like to recognize everybody and ask for a moment of silence for both families. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, also like to, uh, commend our, our citizens, who really came together and have offered their support through GoFundMe pages, through, uh, donations to the family, uh, in person, gift cards, um, when the chips are down, this town rallies around their, their fellow citizens and, uh, always do the right thing. And, uh, it's unfortunate that we have to have tragedy for that to kick in, but, uh, it is certainly gratifying to know that our citizens do care about everybody. So, they should, the whole town should be commended. I do have a couple of announcements. The Winter Farmers Market will be this Sunday, February ninth, from one thirty to five thirty at Vincent Methodist Church. And then on Saturday, February fifteenth, it'll be electronic recycling. All you people who got big screen TVs for the Super Bowl, you can bring your old TVs down to, uh, DPW at the September fifteenth. That's all I have. Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, I have. I have ordinance number three four three seven tonight, and ordinance to amend and ordinance code, final code of Township of Nutley, Chapter five, ten, Article one and two, Sections five, ten dash one, through Sections five, ten dash twenty, entitled Pedaling, Soliciting, and Canvassing. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with notice required by law and the further consideration of the ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners, I believe is March?
Third.
March third.
It says February eighteenth, right?
Which one is it, okay? March third, right? It would be March third. March third is the correct.
March third.
Yes, please.
Just gotta change it on the. Reading on March third. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Resolutions. Commissioner Rogers? Resolution number nineteen twenty. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provision of R S forty-eight, four dash fifty-nine, the following transfers of two thousand and nineteen appropriation reserves be, and the same hereby authorized and approved, from garbage and trash removal, one thousand dollars to Military Veterans Affairs Bureau, S M W, one thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty dash twenty, proclamation to proclaim February as the National Heart Health Month, uh, as written, and so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans, will you, uh, take Commissioner Tucci's resolution?
Yes. I, I would note that, uh, for Commissioner Tucci, uh, resolution number twenty-four twenty has been pulled this evening, uh, and we'll see it at a later date. Twenty-two twenty, whereas sealed bids were received for recreation uniforms, equipment, and supplies on December twenty-seven, two thousand and nineteen in the township, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township and the County of Essex State, New Jersey, that, uh, the contract for recreation, uh, uniforms, equipment, and supplies be awarded to DOT Designing, uh, at two forty-two Possum Hollow Road, Monroe Township, uh, in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars. Funds are available from account T twenty-four, nine oh nine, nine oh one, and T twenty-four, nine oh nine, nine fifteen, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor of the Township clerk be and who are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said a contract for the Township of Nutley, uh, in the County of Essex State, New Jersey, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Twenty-five twenty, whereas sealed bids were received for tree removal service on December twenty-seven, two thousand and nineteen, in the township, uh, whereas Dujett's Tree Experts fifty-four notch road, uh, was the lowest bidder in Woodland Park. Uh, whereas the contract is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, from account zero zero one, five, uh, twelve, two hundred, and has been certified by the, uh, Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this, uh, resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex State, New Jersey, that a contract for tree removal is, uh, awarded to Dujett Tree Experts, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
I don't have twenty-three twenty in my packet.
Twenty-four twenty.
It's twenty-three twenty, is for Veridian?
The Veridian is off. This one's from Glotzback.
Oh. Oh, all right. I gave the one, so twenty-three twenty's off, correct? Thanks. All right. So I'll read twenty-four twenty. Uh, whereas the Essex County Recreation Open Space Trust, uh, Fund provides grants to municipal governments for assistance in the development or redevelopment of municipal recreation facilities, whereas the Township of Nutley desires to further the public interest by attaining a grant from the county trust for a bench, uh, shell at Glotzback Park, uh, whereas the township is respectfully requesting one hundred and forty-eight thousand, four, four hundred and fifty-two dollars from the county trust funds for the express purpose of demolition, demolition of the current baseball ball field, uh, site preparation, installation of a bench shell. Uh, whereas the Board of Commissioners have reviewed the county trust fund program statement and the trust fund municipal program improvement application, instructions, and desires to make an application for said grant by providing an application and furnishing such documents as may be required. Whereas the, uh, whereas the Essex County shall determine whether the application is complete and in conformance with the scope and intent of the county trust fund, whereas the Township of Nutley is willing to use the county trust fund in accordance with such rules, regulations, and applicable statutes, and is willing into, is willing to enter into an agreement with the, uh, with the County of Essex for this project. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley One, that is hereby authorized to submit the above completed project application to the County of Essex by the deadline, February sixth, twenty twenty, as established by the county, that the Fed, uh, that the Township of Nutley agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations in its performance of the project, and this resolution shall be, shall take effect immediately, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That completes Commissioner Tucci's resolutions for the evening. Uh, I'll read mine. Uh, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the re-provision of R S forty-eight, colon, four dash fifty-nine, the following transfers of two thousand and nineteen reserve, uh, appropriations reserves be and the same are hereby authorized. of 2019 reserve appropriation reserves be in the same are hereby authorized and approved. Construction code official ONE, 5,000, administration of township ordinance ONE, 20,000, treasurer office ONE, 600, and that's moved to construction office salary and wage 25,000, and treasurer's office salary and wage 600, for a total of 25,600, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the planning board received an escrow deposit in the amount of $4,000 from 432 Owners, Inc., for the property located at One River Road in Nutley, whereas the escrow fee of $4,000 was collected and deposited into the trust account 15911970, whereas the planning board has reviewed and determined that the balance of the escrow amount of $1,639.50 is due to 432 Owners, Inc. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to refund the escrow fee in the amount of $1,639.50 to 432 Owners, Inc., so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the law firm of Pyros Zinnis Sefeli-Parson Genetempo, located at 360 Passaic Avenue in Nutley, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service pursuant to provisions of NJSA 1944A 20.5, to provide legal counsel services concerning municipal tax appeals, whereas such services will exceed the contract amount of $50,000, and the following change order is needed. Change order number one, provide legal service not to exceed $3,062.25, whereas funds are available from account 901204205, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, the change order number one, in the amount of $3,062.65 be, and is hereby approved, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patako?
Yes, this is Resolution 21-20. I'm just going to read it by title, but this is a resolution for our towing contract with Nicoletti Motor Body Works and Twin Towing, and it's scheduled because they split it, so I'm going to move it as written.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with provisions of RS 484-59, the following transfers of 2019 appropriation reserves be the same or hereby authorized and approved, from municipal court salary and wage $1,000, to public defender salary and wage $1,000. I move resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organization. St. Mary's Catholic Church, license number 120, on premise 50/50 cash raffle, to be held Friday, May 29, 2020. Knights of Columbus Holy Family Council, license number 220, off premise merchandise raffle, to be held Sunday, April 26, 2020. Lincoln School PTO, license number 320, on premise 50/50 cash raffle, and license number 420, on premise merchandise raffle, both to be held Saturday, March 21, 2020. HSA Good Shepherd Academy, license number 520, on premise merchandise raffle, and license number 620, on premise 50/50 cash raffle, both to be held Sunday, March 29, 2020. And Friends of Phoenix Center, license number 720, on premise 50/50 cash raffle, license number 820 casino night, to be held Friday, May 1, 2020. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and municipal clerks authorized to issue the raffle license under the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with provisions RS 4840-59, the following transfers of 2019 appropriation reserves be in the same are hereby authorized and approved, from the municipal prosecutors ONE 900, rent levelling ONE 300, to municipal prosecutor salary and wage 900, rent levelling salary and wage 300, for a total amount of 1,200. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley honors the heritage of African Americans and acknowledges their many contributions to our nation, our state, and our township. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley celebrate National African American History Month 2020, in honor of the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, and spiritual development in our nation, our state, and our township. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Before I vote on it, I'd like to, I tell you, I really think it's appropriate, it is appropriate to mention that one of the greatest African American leaders that we've had ever in this town have crossed our paths was John Walker, Assistant Superintendent of Schools and former principal of Yanaco School. This man was a giant of a role model for people, no matter what race, color, creed, religion, always out there with the kids, always thinking about the teachers, always thinking about the welfare of this community. So although we have Dr. Woodson's name in here, boy, I'd like to just kind of, in the spirit of it, think about John Walker, and I proudly vote yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, but I vote with an amendment that the resolution include Mr. Walker.
Excellent.
Commissioner Patako.
Yes.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye with the amendment.
Whereas the law firm of Pyros Zinnis Sefeli-Parson Genetempo, 360 Passaic Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 1944A-20.5, for the services of an attorney who specializes in municipal land use in connection with the township's land use policies and litigation in the Township of Nutley on March 5, 2019, by Resolution 6719, and whereas such services have exceeded the original contract in the amount of $17,000, and whereas Mayor Scarpelli on behalf of the Board of Commissioners has recommended the following change order from said contracts. Change order number one, provide legal services primarily related to the Diamond Springs Township of Nutley case in the amount of $114.98, whereas funds are billed from account number 9010112205, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, the change order number one, in the amount of $114.98 be, and hereby approved, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street?
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Do you hear me? Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Walker was a gentleman, none better. He was, I dealt with him with my children at school, and he was a gentleman. I agree with you. Mr. Evans, I received an Oprah response where all town employees are responsible for their own schools, or their credits. Are you aware of this? I don't know if you've seen the letter. Would you like a copy of it?
And your question is?
When is it going to happen? Because we were paying for all the classes prior to that.
We...
Commissioner Evans, first of all, Mr. Moore has filed a complaint with the GRC regarding recent Oprah requests, and I'm not so sure it's appropriate that you should respond while there's an active complaint pending, which Mr. Moore has filed against us in addition to other complaints. So this is obviously in the line of his questioning and his complaint to the GRC, so I don't think it's appropriate to comment about that publicly.
I'll be happy. No problem. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Rubino, 48 North Road. I was wondering if the handbook that you've been working on for the past few years is presently available.
Ms. Genetempo?
Sure. It's been completed. It's being printed up now. We're sending that, it's sent out to the printer, and it's going to be distributed shortly. Whether or not it's a public document is another issue. I understand you're asking for a copy of it, I assume.
Yes.
We haven't made that determination. I have to do a little bit of research on that, but the employees will be getting it very, very shortly.
Okay. And if it is available, you pick it up at the town hall or the clerks?
Yeah, if you Oprah it.
Oh, you have to Oprah it?
Yeah, you have to. Every document has to be Oprah. If it's, if we determine it's going to be loud or turned over, we will turn it over, of course, immediately.
Okay. Thanks. The great crossing at Highfield and Whitford, who's responsible for that crossing?
Excuse me, Ms. Rubino, the railroad crossing? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, right. The grade crossing. Who's responsible for keeping, to maintaining that?
Norfolk Southern.
So if I have a complaint, I can make it to them?
You can. You could also make the complaint to DPW. It's something we can handle. We certainly will. If it's Norfolk Southern's responsibility, we'll, we'll make sure to pass it on to them.
I don't know if you've driven on that street. It's really horrendous.
The crossing itself?
Yes. The, there's like, it's really a bumpy kind of a situation.
That portion of the roadway is Norfolk Southern's.
Okay. I would like the, the address or the telephone number, because I really can't hear you as far north.
Norfolk Southern.
Southern, okay.
I don't, I don't even know if we have that, that telephone number. Well, we'll certainly find it and try to get it, get it to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Also, what's going on with Diamond Springs? Is there anything happening there with that property?
There's nothing happening with the property right now. The matter's still being litigated. It's before a new judge in Essex County, and there are motions pending on the case. There's been discovery exchange recently, but there's no, there's nothing active on the property right now.
What are they proposing to put there?
There's nothing proposed right now.
Oh, okay. It's just...
It's an issue on zoning right now and interpretation of the map, and that's still the issue before the court.
Okay.
We're not sure when that's going to really be heard.
Right.
The courts are very delayed right now because of lack of judges, so the judges that are working are extremely overworked, and they don't have enough time to get to a lot of the cases, and a lot of the motions are backed up. So that's part of the problem here.
All right. Also, one more thing is, when you hire somebody for part-time work, does that person get health benefits? I mean, how many hours do you have to work in order to get health benefits as an employee in the town of Nutley?
Yeah, the, it's an interesting question, because state health benefits are awarded to people, and in town, we have followed generally 30 hours of work in order for them to, for someone to get those benefits. It used to be, the old standard, for many, many years was 20 hours, but that's now been changed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, we are going to go into executive session for contract negotiations, correct? Mr. Genetempo?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.